Well, good morning, everyone. Let's call to our Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, December 15th.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Chair Weymeyer.
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
And pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own. It is delivered by the citizens of this country.
And our invocation. Good morning.
Morning, everybody. Good to see you once again. There's an old African proverb that says, if you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together. Let's pray. God, thank you for shaping our lives and caring about our future. We're grateful that you are concerned about every detail of our lives. Thank you for always keeping your promises. When we get anxious or worried about outcomes that we cannot control, help us to continue to draw close to you. We place our trust in you, and you will never fail us in Jesus's name. Amen. Amen. God bless you all.
Thanks. And... Do you have any public comment?
No.
Consent agenda would be minutes from our December 8th meeting, minutes from our December 13th meeting, study session, and claim vouchers in the amount of $471,567.70 and a tax change order that nets negative $38.48. That's our consent agenda. Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. First item of business is a special use permit. Good morning, Kenny.
Morning, Commissioners. So this first request is a special use permit for the LOH Fire District for a new fire station that they're planning on constructing. Their existing facility is located on Sand Creek Road just west of 59 Highway, and what they are proposing is basically expanding the site to be able to build a new structure just to the west of the existing facility. So overall, probably not really a whole lot of changes that are going on. You know, traffic really should stay the same, you know, because everything that's already happening is just going to slide over to the west a little bit. And I believe what they have stated is probably within a year after constructing the new facility, then they do plan on coming back in and demolishing, I think, the existing facilities. And then, you know, the new facility will also be used as a voting location. They also do want to have some training activities that will happen on the site, and so the existing property will end up becoming more of the training side, I think, is what will actually occur there. There were some unique issues on this one, and there are some title issues on their current property. Originally, they were looking at trying to do a boundary line adjustment to where their existing parcel would just get bigger, but because of some of those title issues, they're actually keeping them as separate parcels. Part of the reason is that they need to be able to get the financing, and with the title issues, they couldn't really get the financing that they needed. So this is a new parcel that's going to be created once we get through the special use permit process. The existing facility is Zone C2. The new parcel, or the new part that's going to be added, is currently Zoned A1. Both of those districts allow for fire stations and other types of public facilities as special uses. So we had some discussion at the beginning of rezoning the new parcel to match the old parcel. In my mind, it just was an extra step that we would go through when it would be permitted either way. While it will stay in the A1 district, and the normal regulations for the A1 district typically require a 40-acre minimum parcel size, the regulations do allow for certain types of public facilities, and the Planning Commission can approve the lot size smaller than that, and specifically, you know, cell towers and some of those other ones that sometimes might happen out in that area. So the Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval of this, including with only the two-acre parcel size. The new floodplain maps do impact this property a little bit. Most of the new floodplain is sort of occurring in the southeast corner of the site. The new building will be up to the northwest side of the site, so should be high enough to be out in the floodplain. They will probably have to go through some floodplain permitting processes just with the new entrances that will be installed on the site, and also they're anticipating sort of putting gravel on nearly the entire site. And so some of that work and the grading work will require that. Other items, I think, that came up, you know, they've said that all of their storage generally is going to be inside. I mean, every once in a while, they'll have some of their practice structures or something, or a vehicle that they're using outside, but they have stated that they're going to try to keep the site pretty clean. Part of the reason for the new building is so that they can keep all of their stuff inside and not have it out in the weather. They are currently requesting, or at least as part of their site plan showed, two new entrances that were like 50-foot wide entrances. I've talked with Public Works Department. That's probably a little larger than what we would normally permit, and probably the spacing is a little bit closer than what we would normally permit, too. But I've told the Fire District what they really need to do is come in, talk to David to sort of verify the size of the entrances and where those entrances will be located. And David has said he'd be happy to work with them to make sure that we get something that does work for their function. I have also recommended, and the Planning Commission did also recommend for them to do a stormwater management plan. Again, probably, I'd say somewhere between 75% and 90% of the site's going to end up being gravelled and... So there is, then, probably be a lot more runoff that's caused by that, also some regrading that's going to force the water sort of into the ditch. So just have some of those presented before building permit would be issues, and we can make sure that any new drainage isn't going to affect adjacent properties. I think those are probably the main items. I don't know if any of the board have any questions, but the Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval of the request, and that was unanimous approval as well.
Kenny, this building serves as also the Ottawa Township Community Building. Is that a factor in this zoning at all?
I know that they, in the western portion of the building, they have sort of a meeting area that'll be used for elections, and I think some other meetings and functions. And I think that sort of fits in with the use of a fire station, so I don't see that there's...
Roy, I have spoke with Don Rumford and David Alderman, who are on the Township Board there, and they have worked really closely with Reese Laurie, who's kind of heading up this project, and Sheldon Schultz, who are on the Fire Board. And the Township doesn't use the building very much anymore, and so they were going to just let, do a very long-term lease, like a 100-year lease, to the Fire Board. But then, as Kenny said, the title issues just created some problems, so they decided to build this new building. And so the Fire Board knows that the Township Board has access to the building when they need it.
That's what I thought.
And Reese has been working really closely with me, too, to make sure that everything fits the needs of a voting location, too, so we can continue to serve the people out there in that area. Because, as you know, we've moved Hays Township to that location also to vote, so we have Hays and Ottawa Township there now, and that's working really well, and I hate to lose that. So we're working really closely on that.
Is this new room, is the new room that's available for that comparable to the one that's there now?
My understanding is supposed to be bigger.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Kenny on this? There are a motion to approve the special use permit application 2109-1921 to allow the expansion and operation of the fire station facility in a C2 commercial district to include the additional property located in the A1 zoning district based on the findings and subject to the eight conditions cited in the attached resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. All right. Our second one, Kenny's rezoning application.
This was a request by the Bergdolls in regards to lots split on a property down in the southeast corner of the county to create a 14.02-acre tract. The property is currently Zoned A1 Agriculture, and they're proposing to rezone it to the RE district. I would note directly to the east of this property, there is a number of parcels that are already Zoned RE and that are, I think, in the sort of 5 to 10-acre range in size. So this is basically almost an expansion of that existing district. The portion of the property that they're proposing to rezone and then split off also has an existing farmhouse on it and some other structures. And so my understanding is they desire to rezone it, split it, and then be able to sell that off from the ag land that it's currently on. I think the parcel in total is a quarter section plus another 80 that is all together, so there will still be a larger tract of ground. Before they actually, this got to the Planning Commission, they did do an exempt split for the quarter-quarter that this is located in. And when we were reviewing our publication notices on this request, we noticed that we had only noted the 14.02-acre parcel. And so the next Planning Commission meeting, I believe we're going back also for rezoning to the A2 district for the other portion of that quarter-quarter, because that's going to be, end up being less than 40 acres in size. But I don't really anticipate that there's going to be any concerns in regards to that. They're just planning on continuing to use that remainder tract as part of their agricultural operations. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the request unanimously, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Pretty straightforward. Anyone care to make a motion to approve rezoned application 2110-1927?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes.
Thanks, Kenny. Third item of business is to consider formalizing the changes to the county's personnel rules and pay plan that we discussed Monday.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
As Colton said, we discussed at the Monday's study session the proposed changes to the Franklin County Personnel Rules and Pay Plan, and unless you have further questions or on any of those recommendations, we're here to request of approve and then to incorporate the changes into the Personnel Rules and Pay Plan effective December 21st to 25th.
Nothing? I wouldn't imagine. We talked about it quite a bit Monday, so anyone care to make a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Fourth item of business is to consider approving a resolution adopting the updated Lake Region Solid Waste Management Plan.
Commissioners, each year, each of the six counties associated with the Lake Region are required to review and update the Solid Waste Management Plan. If you recall, back in, I believe it was January of this year, we went through this process. We were a little bit late with getting that completed last year. We had a new executive director, and so we approved the 2020 management plan in January. Well, this is taking care of the 2021 management plan, and as a part of this, a committee looked through it, made some updates. County staff has reviewed that and seen no issues with it. Our next major revision will be in 2023, where we will update all of the pertinent data and really go through it with the fine-tooth comb. Until then, it's just these minor revisions, and as a part of this, we'll need to pass a resolution adopting the management plan, which is part of your packet there. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, but it's very routine, and there weren't really any updates on the Franklin County portion. We took care of most of those back in January.
All right. Affirmative motion would be to approve the resolution adopting the revised Lake Region Solid Waste Management Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Next item is a proposal for engineering services on the Osborne Terrace Bridge just west of town.
Commissioners, this particular proposal is from CFS, who is doing the bridge design for this project. This portion of the project is the geotech, where they're going to go out and they're going to bore four different locations, essentially where the piers would be and also where the abutments will be, to determine what kind of footing they're going to have on there, whether it's going to be piles or spread footings, those sorts of things. They will drill these holes, they'll sample the material that comes out of it in their lab, and from that, they will give the design engineers design recommendations on what materials and just how they need to design those. And that'll be in the form of a written report that will go to the bridge engineer. So staff would recommend approving this proposal so they can get started with the work here in the next few weeks.
This is item number five, and that proposal's in the amount of $15,788. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. For the next item of business, we have some neighborhood revitalization properties to consider.
So Commissioners, this is just like the other ones that we've brought to you previously this year. These projects have been approved by the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee to be entered into the program once the projects are complete. So this is just a preliminary approval of these projects, so they can move forward with plans to be in the program when the projects are complete.
All right.
Any questions?
Is there... What the motion says here. There are a motion to approve the proposed properties into the Neighborhood Revitalization Program as each property meets the program requirements.
I'm moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. For our seventh item of business, we need to select a voting delegate and a couple of alternates for the KAC special election that's January 5th.
On your agenda, you have the voting delegate form, and you also have the sample ballot that is what the special election is going to be held for. So I need to submit your delegates and for the person who will be voting for you guys on this. So like always, when we vote for KAC delegates, they would like a delegate and two alternates. But this is coming up pretty quick, so I would think someone would know if they're going to be able to be there or not.
Am I right? Is something they can do online?
It is a virtual.
Yes, it's a virtual meeting.
And there's only one question. It'll take about one minute.
Yeah.
The special election and all that sounds probably more interesting than it is. It's whether or not this association should allow the association of human resource, county human resource.
Yeah.
Professionals into the organization.
Yeah, so part of the KAC is already, like, the Clerks Association is already a part of it, you know, obviously Commissioners, appraisers, so all the different organizations that have a voting member. So this is to give them a voting member.
All right. Who'd like to...
I'm not going anywhere I could do it.
All right. She said she's...
I was going to ask you if you'd be willing to be a delegate.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd make that motion.
You happy to be an alternate, though?
Yeah.
You happy to be an alternate?
I'd be fine.
We have to pick a couple of alternates, so...
Yeah.
Roy, Rod.
Yeah.
Alternate?
I'll be the third alternate.
Okay, so I have Commissioner Dickinson for the delegate, Commissioner Sotomayor for the first alternate, and Commissioner Dunn for the second alternate.
I believe that would be a... Anyone care to make that motion?
I'll move.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Our eighth item of business will consider filling a vacancy on the Hays Township Board.
So Commissioners, one of the members of the Hays Township Board has moved into the city limits of Ottawa, and so she's no longer in the area, and so it's created a vacancy on the board. And I was contacted by Russ Baze to fill that vacancy on the board. As you know, many times we advertise for these positions with no interest at all, but Mr. Baze did come in and sign a letter for us, and that's attached to your agenda. So I would just recommend that you appoint him to fill that vacancy, and then he would be up for election at the next, I believe it's the next election, he would be on the ballot for.
There are a motion to approve appointing Russ Baze to fill the vacancy on the Hays Township Board.
I'll make that motion to approve.
All right. Second.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. Next item is similar for the Homewood-Williamsburg Fire District Board.
So same thing, the, one of the board members has moved out of the district and can no longer serve, and so theirs is a little bit different. The Townships appoint, the Townships make a recommendation to you guys of who they would like to fill those positions, because they have one representative from Homewood, one representative from Williamsburg, and then one at-large that they kind of work together on to fill that vacancy. So this is the Williamsburg seat, and they've sent their recommendation to you, and it's there for you.
All right.
I'll put it Ralphie.
Is there a motion to appoint Richard Ferguson to the Homewood-Williamsburg Fire District Board?
I'm moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. And our 10th item, it is the end of the year, so we need to consider holding a budget hearing to amend our 2021 county budget.
Commissioners, we have two funds that need to be amended this year, Centropolis Sewer and also the Solid Waste Fund. We previously spoke about both of those. Kenny reached out to me on the Centropolis Sewer and said there were some additional expenditures there this year that we hadn't planned on for repairs, but we do have additional reserve in the fund. So we just would slide some of those funds over that we hadn't previously budgeted to spend to cover these expenses. Likewise, Solid Waste, they took in more trash this year, and so they have more disposal fees, so they did offset that with revenue that came in. So those are the two changes that we're planning to make to the budget this year. So we just need to open a hearing and then vote on it.
We're setting a date for a hearing, or we need to have a hearing now?
We need to have a hearing today. We've already published it in the paper, and I believe that's attached to your agenda also, the publication that we put in the paper.
Make sure we get the procedural part right, right? So is there a motion to open the hearing to approve the...
So we need to open a public hearing so that anyone can comment that would like to on the proposed changes to the budget.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to open an amended budget hearing?
Second.
All in favor.
All in favor? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Anyone care to speak on the amended budget proposals? One more time, anybody care to speak? Seen none? Look for a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Now we would look to adopt the amended changes? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the amended 2021 budget as presented?
So... Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes.
Just a quick question before we move on. How does the annex fund, that's the other one that, because we've done a lot of work in here this year?
We have done a lot of work in here, but as we discussed with you guys previously, that we may have to make some of those expenditures out of our regular capital accounts. So we did do the last project out of the regular capital account just to preserve some of the cash carryover that we have in the annex fund, so we make sure that we're good going forward to the beginning of the year. We potentially could have absorbed that into the annex budget, but we wanted to make sure that we had enough starting out the new year and to work with the budget, to make the budget work for next year also. So we did do the wall project out of our regular reserve fund.
That concludes our items of business. Some staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about the 21 budget. Those were very minor amendments, and as you know, this is largely procedural in nature, and certainly my leadership team understands what the expectations are, but I don't want to take that for granted either. This was a very successful budget year for Franklin County, and each member of the leadership team who is in charge of their own respective budgets did an excellent job of, they were good fiduciaries of taxpayer dollars. If they weren't, then this amendment process would look a lot different. But nothing that happened here is indicative of any kind of issues whatsoever, so I do want to give kudos to all of our department heads and elected officials because they had another fantastic year. And then want to thank the five of you for approving the changes to the pay plan and the personnel rules. We talk about this all the time, but finding people is not getting easier, and I don't anticipate that it's going to get easier for years. Like, this is not a short-term problem. I believe it to be a long-term problem, and so your willingness to consider changes is greatly appreciated. And I would just ask that you continue to keep an open mind, because we will continue to bring ideas to you, and some of them are going to be outside of the box. And it may be easy to look at, you're going to hear all sorts of ideas. It may be easy to look at one individual idea and be like, well, is this going to literally lead to retention of employees? I mean, that's a question. But I think what I would ask that you keep in mind is that we're trying to create a culture here where they see a governing body who is trying to do a cumulative list of things on behalf of the employees. And so much of this is about continuing to instill that culture as well. So I would just ask that we keep that in mind as we move forward, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Casey?
Good morning. I just want to echo Derek's sentiments about approving the changes to the personnel policy. There's several of us that sit in the retention committee and talked about this, and we do think it'll have a big impact and be very appreciated by employees of the county. So COVID numbers remain high, and we're doing lots of testing. We're still working on taking care of the issue in the parking lot with the line with OFP. I know they had a meeting about that yesterday, so we're working on that. And then I just wanted to mention that the Health Department has added several booster clinics because we're still getting lots of phone calls. So they're doing about, or they have enough appointments for 200 boosters a week. And I think it's actually every other week. So there's like 200 one week, and then 100 the next, and then 200 one week. And those will all be done right here in the commission chambers. And then we also have added a Peds clinic because some of their entities that had the Peds vaccine in the community no longer are having trouble getting it. So that's really all I have unless you have questions.
I got a question on appreciation for the volunteers.
Yeah.
This Friday, it's three, three to what?
Three to kind of whenever. The visitor center typically closes at five. And most of them don't like to drive when it's dark. So it'll be probably 4:30 or 5:00, it'll be completely done.
My understanding is she left an in-time off of there, so if you want to party all night, you guys can.
That's what I said.
Okay.
You're welcome to be there all night, Roy, but I'm going to leave you the key.
That's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment that kind of adds on to what you're talking about. So, I mean, I absolutely love my job. It came to my attention that an entity was having trouble getting those second shots for those kids. And somebody said, can the county help? Can the county, you know, what can the county do to help this out? And at 7:00 o'clock at night, I am texting Brenda Fitzmyer going, can the county, you know, what can the county do? And she is on the phone with the pharmacist.
At the moment.
At the entity, you know, saying, what, what can we do? What, you know, and that's awesome, you know, that we are, we are willing to be a part of the solution whenever we can. And that starts with the Health Department. That's across the board. You know, if I have a citizen that has a question, you know, and I can get on, and then once I've talked to her, you know what? I don't have to think about it anymore because I know she's going to take care of it. That's just awesome that we have the leadership that we have.
Thank you, Casey. Paul, anything from FCDC? All right. Sarah, anything else? No. Brandon?
Wanted to let you all know, we have a couple of trees on the courthouse lawn that we had an arborist come out and just kind of evaluate them. And there's two that are, well, one that is dead. There's a pine tree on the north side of the courthouse, kind of between the courthouse and the district court that really needs to come down. And then on the south side, there's a maple tree that it's just, I've got some pictures of it on my phone, but a lot of the main trunks are dying, the bark is peeling off. And we really need to do something about it before it poses a threat to anybody walking through there. So looking to remove both of those trees. And then in the fall, we'll, of course, plant some new ones. Fall is really the best time to plant trees, so that's why we would wait until the fall. But just wanted to let you know kind of what we're looking at with trees. There's one other one that's another maple tree right next to the one on the south side. That's not looking really great, but it may bounce back, so we're just going to keep an eye on that one. But hopefully, it does okay, and it bounces back, so.
Would there be any, and we've talked about this a little bit, looking towards next fall? I mean, we've talked about potentially, we've done all this work to the courthouse. And, you know, we believe it to be the premier tourist destination in Franklin County. Would there be any appetite to discuss adding landscaping, adding irrigation to the courthouse lawn just so that we can, you know, really keep that lawn and the landscaping in good shape year-round? Because right now, we've got Brandon and his limited staff dragging hoses around to the various corners. But we have a revenue source in transient guest tax funds. I mean, we could do any number of things. I'm just trying to ascertain, would there be a desire on the board's behalf to have that discussion, you know, first or second quarter of next year, looking towards the fall?
Well, irrigation system or sprinkler system on the courthouse lawn would have to eliminate some of the events that occur on that lawn with people driving, driving on that lawn. I don't think it'd be very good for a sprinkler system, unless it was deep enough or wouldn't be a bad. But it would make it look a lot nicer.
Say, I don't believe that to be an issue. I think the pipes, I mean, maybe if you were talking big industrial trucks, but I think you can generally drive, I mean, you couldn't drive over a sprinkler head, but just pipes buried underground, I don't think it would pose. I mean, if anything, I think it would make the lawn more hospitable.
We already have a pretty extensive geothermal system under there to heat the courthouse. I mean, you're going to drive a riding mower over it anyways. And being able to water it and get it built up in ahead of events like the car show where there is quite a bit of traffic on there, probably end up, same thing you would a football field, work on it all year so it can get tore up and fall, but.
Your point, Roy, I think there, I mean, the depth of those lines, how deep they're buried is something to look at. I mean, we don't typically have that, anything that heavy on the lawn. But of course, we just had some painting done and some roof work done, and there were some pretty heavy lifts. A shallow buried line definitely would have broken in that instance.
I don't know.
I think it's something that we could work around if we.
I don't know if that'd be an issue if we didn't want to put in a sprinkler system of some kind.
I think we could find a solution and still have it there.
I think it's a great idea. I think it'd look sharp. Notice the other day, and since we're kind of on the subject, in front of the jail, there's some large kind of overgrown bushes that sort of obscure the windows. And I don't know if that maybe concerns the sheriff too, but it'd be, if you're there, if we have the contractor, somebody removing trees, maybe a time to think about taking those out.
Rod, Don?
Yeah.
Find to have the discussion?
For years and years and years, I've seen them have to do just exactly what you said. Not saying it's a bad thing, but it's just something you save yourself be going doing something else. If you're not doing that, and it gives it more of an equal volume. And most of those sprinkler systems go down in the ground and pop up when the water pressure comes on. The only time you get in trouble is when they don't go back down. I mowed one off or two myself.
Yeah.
But that's just happened, you know, but they're made to go up and down out of the ground, so.
Then my last question for you, Brandon. The board had discussed flooring for the upstairs of the visitor's center as part of our discussion with the Historical Society. Where are we at on that?
Thank you for bringing that up. I totally forgot about that. So I talked with a local contractor about that and just trying to look for, you know, we're not trying to break the bank, it's just a storage area to keep swept up. The, they gave us two different options that they believed were to be reasonable, you know, good solutions for up there and, you know, on the cheaper end. And they, we still came to, well, we're right around the $3,500 mark to do the flooring up there. So that's kind of about what we're looking at up there.
Well, if you want to send me those options, and we can have, not that, I don't know that it will require extensive discussion, but we can bring those in front of you and have a little bit.
Before we leave the landscaping discussion, the first thought that came through my head is the more landscaping that you have, then you have to maintain that landscaping. And your department is already stretched. And so I don't know, you know, it depends on what you're thinking as far as landscape. If it's just, you know, water, then that's great. If you're putting in, you know, bushes and flowers and, you know, true, you know, then maybe not so much. Just, I mean, not that it wouldn't be nice, it's just who do we have that can maintain it?
Yeah. And I think it would be worth looking into some, maybe some lower maintenance options. You know, I don't really know what that looks like, but things that don't need a lot of.
I think lower maintenance landscape options are incredibly popular because even the average homeowner is so busy nowadays, they, that is something that homeowners do. So I think, and we can put a menu of options in front of them, but I don't worry about that as much. And if it got to be something, we could talk to Toms about that too because they've done a great job out at the visitor's center maintaining some of that. So just something to think about.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. Sheriff, under sheriff.
Good morning. I also want to say thank you for approving the changes to the Personnel Pay Plan. Retention, as you guys know, is pretty important. I know for my staff, we go through a lot of expense to hire someone and then a lot greater expense to get them properly trained and equipped. And so retention is pretty vital for us. It's a good economic sense to be able to keep our people around. I also want to say thank you to the administrator for the retention committee that you have and the ideas that are coming out of that. I think there's some great ideas and that are very important. One of the ideas that Derek talked about, I believe it was a Monday study session, was the idea of looking at more part-time employees to fill some roles. We have started kind of reaching out and advertising for some of our jail positions. It has seemed to generate a little bit more interest for us. So I know the under sheriff has had a couple interviews this week due to being able to do that. So that outside-the-box thinking, away from some of our traditional stuff, I think is going to be beneficial for our organization. So we appreciate having those options. And then the last thing I'd have is that you guys know that we have a Sheriff's Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) organization that is designed to support the sheriff's office and in particular fund the Arcanine program in large part. And this past month or so, we have received several donations to that from the members of the public. Two or three I'd consider sizable, one of those even being a $10,000 donation. And so you may see some of our dogs here shortly. We have one of our canines that has body armor, that has, wears a vest, has a vest for entry. This person wanted to make sure that all three of our dogs had had body armor. And so made a sizable donation to take care of that as well as some equipment for our vehicles to help keep them safe in the summer months. So there's some special type of window tanning and then some sensors and a system that kicks on. So if heat gets too high, it automatically rolls down windows, kicks fans on, does different things. So, and it's just about safety. But I just wanted to point out to you guys that you may see some of those things, and those are not tax dollars being expended on those. I think it would be a legitimate purpose for that, but these are citizen donations to fund those items. So we are very appreciative of the community support that we've received, especially in that area.
Saw one the other day wearing a fur coat.
Nice. Thank you.
Does it make a difference to your program now that the city has their own canine?
It does not. They, we still have all the rest of the county to cover. We also still support functions within the city of Ottawa. Couple in particular, with the size of the schools and then some of our businesses here, particularly like American Eagle, we have a program, they have a program where they bring in canines to do searches on a regular basis. They walk through the parking lot and then search all the employee lockers in different areas. And one canine cannot do all that, it's too large of an area. So we have a team approach on those things. And so I think it will just kind of enhance what we're able to do with the PD. Having one as well, and we still have three. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything, Kenny?
Nope.
All right. Public Works, David?
I too would like to echo the thanks for the changes in the pay plan. I think it's, you know, it's obviously going to have a positive impact on our current employees, but I think it's also going to help us attract and retain, retain future employees that come through our door. So I appreciate that as well. Public Works crews finished the Crossroad 2 project in the city of Rantoul. That's right on the edge of the city limits there. This project will provide a little bit of relief to the storm drainage system in that portion of town, but it doesn't come close to solving all of their stormwater issues citywide. We did add some riprap along the ditch to help with erosion and future flood events. So I think that overall, that little project turned out very well. We're currently working on a ditching project on Haskell West of Eisenhower, where eventually a couple of entrances will be installed. And then we're working on a project on a portion of Iowa Road north of Douglas. We have two locations that wash out continually, and we are taking some steps to build up the road. And we'll add some crossroad tubes in there to help support that area during times of high water. So that's kind of what we've got going on now. We've also done some mowing around the Centropolis Sewer and had personnel helping out at the recycling center as well. Due to today's high wind forecast, we've postponed some work out at the landfill. We're going to dig some test pits, but we didn't think it was prudent to get people and equipment out in that type of weather in the open like that. We're also keeping our recycling trucks parked today. Those are high-profile vehicles with not a lot of weight, and it just didn't seem like a good idea. So we're parking those today. Everybody's working in the building. We are, you know, we are expecting the high winds, and so we started prepping earlier this week for today. We've got all our chainsaws serviced and ready to go. We actually added a couple of chainsaws to our arsenal, so we'll be able to spread out and take care of any downed trees that happen to occur. We've got folks that are going to be on call tonight in case the storm lasts past our regular, normal working hours, which we anticipated doing. So we should be ready to go. Yeah, and I think that's all I've got.
The good news is that the town, the ground is not saturated, so the trees aren't going to blow over easily, so maybe that's.
Yeah, there's, we've got a lot of trees in this county, so we always seem to have some issues here and there. So we'll be ready for it, though.
Clerk's Office, Commissioners, Don?
Yeah, I did attend a Wellsville City meeting last Wednesday night. Main topics there, you know, they're all getting ready to do a big expansion on their library up there. They've been working on it for several years, getting the grant funding and funding and sources and, of course, the site plan and getting approval from the city to expand it, which they did. And they're looking, they're moving forward with that now. And they've pretty well got the money all put together. Still have some, but it's close enough. They feel if they don't move now, with the cost of everything going up the way it is, they're going to start losing ground. They won't be able to save money as fast as the increase in costs going up. So I think it's a pretty smart idea. Main topics up there was that. They did a visual, added on their victory screen, did all the site, showed everybody their proposals and what they're going to do. And it's pretty interesting. But the other thing was they discussed, they did their Christmas bonuses for their employees. They did, they increased their employees' salaries 4% in one of their efforts to try and get ahead of the curve like everybody else is trying to do. They did approve the OFCD funds they're due and with a little increase over last year. And they graciously didn't even have to do it at that meeting. Paul just said, give them a warning that it would be coming after the first of the year. So they just went ahead and approved it right there. So I think that's a good sign that they're, they feel that OFCD is doing a good job for them also up there. I did attend a Wellsville Chamber meeting. They're mainly getting ready to put together a new website for their chamber. They've been working with it. There's a paper that has produced and come out as Baldwin. And it actually has Wellsville News and Baldwin News. And if you look at the paper, one side of it's One Direction for halfway for the Baldwin News. Then you got to turn it over. And so it tells you exactly where the Wellsville starts and the Baldwin, because it's just the opposite upside down. Turn it, pretty neat, neat idea for people. people that doesn't realize. So they've been working with a lady up there that just purchased that facility and chamber, trying to work with her to try and make it more economically sound for her to do it, because they don't have, except for just Ottawa paper, for the county paper, they don't have a, per se, it's written just for them, you know, which that's what this is. And it's a pretty neat deal. Had a report from future business, kids at the school, they always attend their meeting and just give a lot of the topics that they're working on for Christmas and so forth, different educational things. And the school superintendent was there, and we also, the health coalition meets in conjunction with the chamber now. That's how they, it's not the same, it's the same people, but they divide the meeting. So it's economically better for everybody to all have it at one time. And Sheila Robertson from our Health Department facilitates that. So, and they have a main discussion now with mental health and different issues that they're working with the school and everything. That's all I have.
Last Thursday, I went to Topeka. The Board of the Kansas Association of County Commissioners met. We have decided, I believe, we have approved that we are going to hire a lobbyist for our organization. We've not had our own lobbyist before, but there's a lot of things coming down the pike at the state level that we feel like could definitely affect county government. And so we've hired a lobbyist. And at this point, we are going to use funds that we currently have available. If we feel like it really is beneficial, then we probably will reach out to the counties and ask each of them to contribute $200, $300 a year to continue that forward. And the other thing was a couple of us attended, and I know Don said something about this, on Monday, the chamber coffee at the library last Friday. It's really one of the more well-attended coffees, and they announced the O'Town Reads book for 2022. It's called The Sun Does Shine. It is written by a gentleman who spent 30 years on death row, incarcerated for something he didn't do. And it's a book that's available. So if you walk in and you just say you want one of the books, they'll just hand it to you. So they'll have some programs that go with it. They'll have programs from kid age. I mean, they actually have some alternate books for kiddos. But it's something that's really cool, that we're all reading the same book, and then we can all have the discussion together. So if that's something that you're interested in, you'd like to read, go down to the library, pick it up. And that's all I have.
Well, I appreciate the work of the Conversation Committee. I wish we could do more with inflation the way it is right now, but I just want to thank the people that worked on that project. And, you know, retention is the biggest, big thing for any organization. And whatever we can do as a commission, I think it's important to keep that in mind with our decisions and going forward. So just want to thank all our employees for the efforts they make.
All right. We need a motion to adjourn. Need a second?
Second.
Second from Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.